Good evening. I forgot for, drew a blank for a minute there.
Happy New Year.
It's Happy New Year. It's Tuesday, January 9th, 2018, and this is the Carlisle Board of Selectmen's meeting. So as customary, I'm going to read through the agenda, and we'll go from there. So 7:00, community input, 7:05, update regarding Estabrook Woods. 7:30, an update from the planning board about FY '19 budget request and a pathway committee request. 8:00, we have folks here to discuss the HeatSmart Mass Grant. 8:30, there's going to be the taking of Lot 1, 767 Bedford Road. 8:45, town administrator report. 8:55, liaison reports from the board. 9:05, the approval of the 12-26-17 warrants, so it's going to be a report by Kate to let us know what was on that. 9:10 will be the minutes, and 9:15, we will adjourn. Hopefully, we'll get out of here before then.
Yeah.
I think--
Scared me.
Yeah?
Warrants.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I don't really think about warrants.
Yeah. So hopefully, yeah, hopefully, it'll be an early night. So we will-- Hey, Bob.
Hey.
How you doing?
Good.
Thank you. Just so you know, we're rolling. Eggs. Yeah. So 7:00, community input. Anybody here for community input? No, that's good. So we will-- So CCF brought us a present.
That sort of community input.
We'll let-- Yeah, but we'll do that now, so we can--
Yes.
So, but we'll like, we'll let Bob get set up. Whenever you're ready. Okay. That? Oh, we have. Sure.
Let's get the ceiling there, sir.
There we go. Oops, sorry. Oh, boy. Oh, boy.
It kind of goes very slow.
Yeah.
Just let it--
Should we take the 7:05 agenda?
Oh, I see.
Want to look at that?
You kind of got to--
Oh.
There it goes.
There you go.
See, there it goes.
Oh, all right.
It's very slow.
Oh. Well, that's--
Kind of look at that.
Wow.
We paid extra for that.
[laughing]
Yeah. So as, I think most folks know, we had a special town meeting-- What month was that, October? For the-- Yeah. To purchase the, I guess, a portion of the Woodward property or conservation restriction on the Woodward property. The town put forward, oh boy, $500,000? Sorry, I should know this. And, yeah, and CCF contributed $250,000. So we closed, or we're closing on the first lot soon. Right? Did we close?
Second lot, too, November--
Okay, we're closing on lot two.
The second lot.
All right. Okay. So the day after tomorrow, so good, it'll be done. And the folks from CCF wanted to come and present--
Present the check.
Present the giant check.
Right, exactly. So I'd like to present this to--
Yeah, I'll come around this side.
Okay, great. This represents a partnership, a great partnership, I think, between the CCF--
Yeah, we should go in front.
--and the Board of Selectmen and other town officials. The CCF contributed $250,000 towards the purchase price of $750,000. But this was a great working relationship, and in addition to that, we were able to--
David has something in mind.
Our center, the seal, the seal.
The seal?
Okay, there. Now, we're good.
David has a vision.
He does. He has a vision for us. This also, this was an incredible, I think, an incredible deal for Carlisle, because we also were able to work an arrangement to acquire an additional 32 acres, which are adjacent to the Wildlife Refuge. So this was a, this was an incredible working relationship and partnership, and I really want to give credit to David Friedman and to all of CCF for all the work that they did, because it was lots and lots of hours and lots of really creative thinking. So real credit to the CCF Board, so. There you go. Well, thank you very much. Yep. Can we cash that, really?
I think I'll fit in the ATM. We might have to cut it up into strip stuff.
I know. You can mount that in your own--
That's, that's half of it, right?
Now, does it have a routing number on it?
Does.
Oh, so that's, this is the check.
It's the real--
It's a made-up routing number.
Oh, so it's not a real check.
Money's going to be transferred tomorrow directly from banks to banks, from banks to the--
Oh, yeah. 0123578, yeah. I didn't spot that right away.
Is the, is, is the taking of Lot 1 going to take long? It probably won't, right?
Oh, no, no.
Yeah, so why don't we do that, then we can get you guys out early. Unless you want to stick around, you're more than welcome to. But, yeah, so we're going to take things a little out of order, but not, not critical. So, yeah, we'll go to, send item number five for the taking of Lot. So we did this with Lot 2.
Previously.
Yeah, right. So it's more so just a formality, but-- Do you want the motion?
Yeah. Just a second. It's not in file. Where is mine?
Yeah, right. Who gets-- Who did it last time?
I had it. I read it.
There you go.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I move that the Board of Selectmen vote as follows relative to the land located at 767 Bedford Road comprising 4.0071 acres, more or less, as shown as Lot 1 on a plan of land in Carlisle, Massachusetts for Woodward dated December 1, 2015. Said plan being recorded with the Middlesex County North District Registry of Deeds in Plan Book 241, Plan 14 of 2016, and described more particularly in Article 2 of the October 18th, 2017 Special Town Meeting to take said land by eminent domain under the authority of Mass General Laws, Chapter 79, with an accompanying award to the owner, Taina e Roco Tu Vai Cau, of $370,000. The accompanying order of taking and waiver of appraisal, damages, and relocation benefits will be recorded by town council, and an notice of taking will be delivered to the owners within 30 days as required by Mass General Laws, Chapter 79, Section 3. Execution of said order of taking, waiver of appraisal, damages, and relocation benefits, and notice of taking shall be subject to town council's final review of title documents and any other documents or matters pertaining to the taking of the above-described land.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion?
You got David.
Sure.
I think Kate read 370, that it should be 375.
Yeah, it says it's 375 on here.
I think that's what I read.
Okay. All right. And the other public comment? All right. So all those in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstaining, I guess it's only--
Do we have to do a roll call vote?
He's, he's not dialed in yet.
Oh, okay.
So, yep. Nope. All right. Good call. So, it is taken. Consider it done.
Oh, you know what?
All right. So now we'll go back to the first agenda item. Estabrook Woods. You must be Nick. You're the only person in the audience I don't know. I don't know, Nick.
He's been here before.
You have been here before, but I don't remember your name, I'm sorry. But now I do. Now I won't forget it. So please, come on up to the-- Yeah, you might, it might be the shrinking chair, but you're tall, so.
Sorry? Happy New Year.
So is this a, is this just a sort of desire for basic information around the Kerfuffle and Concord? How, how should we frame this?
Well, it's been a while since the Board's heard from you in terms of an update, and I know that there is some, some activity going with litigation and different things, so--
Yeah.
Probably a good time to bring the Board up to speed.
Okay.
Well, I don't know, there's a lot to discuss, but I'll offer what information I can. As I think you know, a couple of years ago, basically 2015 or thereabouts, an issue arose with the Estabrook Woods where it was being publicized on the Internet for meetups and hikes and, most important, dog walking. And the level of traffic grew to the point where the landowners in and around the entrance point at Estabrook Road in Concord grew quite concerned. And there was Neil Rasmussen and Anna Winter Rasmussen, who owned the, the actual land under which that entrance sits, had, had previously carved out, I think it was 11 parking spaces for visitors to the woods. And people started parking up and down the street, and eventually, they asked the town of Concord to bar parking all along the street. They did so. They put up signs all along the road. This made a number of people angry. It led to the formation of the Estabrook Woods Access Committee, of which I was a non-voting member because I was a Carlilian versus a Concordian. And it actually became material at various points in time. But we did, we did good work. Sally Schnitzer and Polly Reeve drove, chaired the process. They did an outstanding job, because there was some, there was some contention between members of the, of the committee, some believing that this should be all about conservation, protecting the woods, and some believing this should be all about human access and freedom for dog walkers and what have you. We came up with a number of proposals that, that pertain to, mostly to parking. I mean, I think we all agreed, and I think that any, any sane logical body would come to the same view that by limiting parking, you're going to limit the number of people who traffic the woods. Obviously, you've got lots of local people who walk in from wherever we live, those who aren't fortunate enough to live that close may drive, those who come from another town, if parking is limited, and therefore, they know that the, the odds of getting a spot are modest to low, they're just not going to make the trip. And sure enough, as parking was limited, traffic came down quite a bit, although more data is necessary. Neil has done an outstanding job of literally putting up cameras, counting the number of cars, counting the number of visitors, counting the number of dogs, calculating the number of dog poops that will end up on his property, cataloging the incidents that have occurred. So there's, there's a growing amount of data gathered mostly by Neil. The Estabrook Woods Access Committee made its recommendation to the Concord Select Board, who graciously accepted it. All looked good, except then, a couple members of the Access Committee sort of broke ranks and sought to convince the Select Board that they should take action outside of the recommendations. And they, this, this is where, well, I'm going to stick to the facts, but I think at some point Concord and, Concord, the town of Concord and the landowners have a slightly different view of the facts. It raised this whole issue over whether or not Concord ever abandoned rights to the trail, the Estabrook Trail, and thus the access point. It seems, if you read all the data, and I actually brought along some documentation, which tells the story well, if you look at all the data, and I don't want to go into, into detail, the, the town abandoned its rights in 1832, and that abandonment was fairly well-recorded. It, it all goes back to basically another landowner who was sick and tired of picnickers trafficking their land, asked the town to abandon the rights. The town said, "No problem," did so, documented it. And the contention that has occurred in the town of Concord is all about, at the, at the root of it, is all about the, a legal fight over whether the Rasmussens have the right to manage that access point. And at the end of the day, it's about whether they have the right to close it, but they haven't closed it. Things blew up a little bit when a coyote mother and her pups were, were living near the entrance. There was an incident between the coyote mother and a dog. It led to the closing of the access point for a short period of time. And that threw everyone up in arms, because they thought, you know, it was the Rasmussens closing the access point. It was opened back up, and since then, there's been a growing animosity on both sides of this issue. The town has, the, the town was working collaboratively with the Rasmussens and other landowners until such time as they weren't, and they filed suit against the Rasmussens and other landowners. And that's kind of where we are. This suit is going to have to, have to work its way through land court. It's probably going to take a year. Members of the Select Board have sought to kind of make nice, but for various reasons, it's kind of too late. The lawyers have this, and it's, and it's underway. Unfortunately, in the process, there's been a lot of very unfortunate publicity in the Concord Journal about the Rasmussens. The town has not stepped forward and made enough statements to sort of shine light on the discussions that have taken place, leaving the Rasmussens kind of hanging and putting them in a very uncomfortable position, where, where it sort of, it appears through the Concord Journal as if they are these bad actors, when in fact, they've really gone out of their way to be accommodating. The truth is, and I think this truth has been lost throughout, is that the Concord, that the Estabrook Woods are, I think, 93% private land, 7% of Concord Holdings, that is. 7% is Panketacit, I think there's one other small area, and the rest is Harvard, the Rasmussens, and other individual private landowners. Carlisle, and Harvard know far better than I, Carlisle may have acreage that is Carlisle town land, and, and ups the overall percentage of the woods as a whole.
Yeah, Carlisle has 441 acres in the Estabrook Woods. Biggest chunk is Harvard.
Right.
Part, part of the rest is, is private land with conservation restrictions.
Right.
And there's some Carlisle conservation, conservation land in there.
And some CRs. So what's happened is that, I, I, I remember making the case at one of our meetings to say that, folks, we've got to be careful here, because if the landowners decide that this is not in their interest, they're simply going to say, if, if, if they're allowed to do so, and their deed doesn't mandate public access, they're going to say, game over, and they're going to say, no trespassing. And suddenly, the, the woods, that we all know to be a GM, is going to be unpassable, because you're not going to be able to get from A to B because of blocked trails. And sure enough, that, that started happening. Mark Thomas, who's a relative newcomer, I think 2005 or thereabouts was when he came to Concord, he owns, trying to remember whose, whose land it belonged to prior, but he abuts Middlesex, and he closed his land. He's at the end of Hugh Cargill. And so now, you can no longer take Bateman's Pond Trail, traffic his driveway, loop around on a Hugh Cargill, and slip back in. Neil graciously spent a fair amount of money creating a trail that allows you to go in through Chamberlain Woods, cross through on a, on a trail that undercuts Laura Mateo's land, and, and you get on this new trail, and it gets you back into the woods. But slowly but surely, we're losing it. The Rasmussens and, actually, the, the landowners, who resurrected something called the Estabrook Council, which I had started years ago, which Ken Hart was a member of, and Sylvia attended meetings of, which was basically an oversight committee looking to just think through issues relevant to, to the Estabrook Woods and seeking to, to provide some, some amount of sort of thoughtful protection any way we could. It lapsed a number of years ago, and Neil has sort of resurrected that as a group of landowners. They put up a number of signs with basic rules that were pretty much the exact rules with a couple of slight exceptions that the Estabrook Woods Access Committee had come up with. These signs have been defaced, the signs themselves have been a bone of contention because they specifically state dogs must be on leash, and that's very much contrary to what the, to the dog owners of Concord would like. Another truth that is not fully understood by all those involved is that obviously, the Estabrook Woods access point at the end of Estabrook Road is one of many. It's one of 17, I believe. Six have access by right, because access belongs to the town, and there's a deed at easement, or the owner's granted a license. The others are private, and an owner can decide to open or close them as they so choose. Unfortunately, a lot of people believe that the Estabrook, the Estabrook Road access point is the most convenient, and so it's, it's, it's received this sort of outsized attention. I don't know how much more detail you want, but at the end of the day, this has, this has come down to a, to a lawsuit. And when the lawsuit resolves, if it resolves in favor of the landowners, primarily the Rasmussens, the Rasmussens will then have to make a decision as to whether they want to leave that access point open. If I were the Rasmussens, I would be pretty, pretty angry by the whole process. I'm not sure what I'd do. They are very, very good people. And we'll see, we'll see what happens. And I hope, and if the town somehow prevails, and I say somehow, because all indications are, if you look at all the data, that it's, it's a, it's a, it's a stretch for them in terms of convincing someone to give them an easement on land where they don't own it and, and gave up rights, and in fact, never even had rights to begin with, but I won't go into, I won't bring you all into the weeds. The, the problem with them gaining access, with them gaining control over the access point--
Carrie?
Yes.
Okay, we've got, we've got you on speakerphone now, Carrie.
Okay.
The, the problem with--
I hope you're staying warm.
From Miami. Warmer. Okay. The problem with the town gaining access point is, is that it's, there's a little bit of a house of cards here. Harvard owns the core of the woods, it's 650 acres. And Ken Hart and Marianne Thornton fought an amazing battle to preserve huge sections of the woods in the 90s, and convinced Harvard to lock down their core, but it wasn't as big a padlock as Ken and Marion and everyone else would have liked. It's, it's, it's strong protection, but it's not a full CR. And if Harvard ever said, "Oh, fine, the town of Concord has made this public access point and is sort of seeking to enable public rights to the woods," then the whole notion of conservation and habitat protection, which are the, the roots of Harvard's protection, kind of go out the window, and suddenly, Harvard might have more than a toe in the door if someone at Harvard ever wanted to do something else with those woods, which would be a true catastrophe for the towns of Concord and Carlisle. So, there you have it. I'll, I'll stop there, and if there are any questions, happy to answer them.
That was great. It was a great summer. Summer right here.
Yeah. So the council that you were on, just the most recent one--
Right.
--or group committee, did that include the landowners, the Rasmussens?
Neil was on the, on the committee.
Okay, yeah.
Correct. And was extremely well behaved. At one point, he did say, "Look, if the town is going to allow parking up and down Estabrook Road, I don't think we have any choice but to close that access point, because it will be, all hell will break loose, as it did before." There was, a dog was killed by a car backing up, cars were parking every which way, someone knocked down another mailbox, a horse was spooked. It was, it was very messy. It was, it just, that road is, it's a dead end, and it just doesn't, it's not an appropriate parking area. But people, a couple of individuals on the committee perceived Neil's comment as basically an ultimatum and blackmail, and it, it's fed into the narrative, shall we say. So, we, the, the committee recommended an allotment of parking spaces, and believe it or not, we put quite a bit of thought into exactly, to the one, how many parking spaces should be where, at Panketacit, at Chamberlain Woods, which is the entrance point along Lowell Road. Carlisle was left out of it largely because it was a, it was a Concord Town Committee. But it was not, it was, it was noted that we have a number of access points here in Carlisle, and, and I've noted that there's been a slight increase in use, not, not huge. And unfortunately, when there was this push to sort of overturn different aspects of the recommendations, the whole set of recommendations went on pause, and that's, that's where we are. There's, Neil has put together a Frequently Asked Questions, which is extremely factual, because I've, I've done my share of reading, and I can corroborate a lot of it, not all of it, but I'm guessing, Neil is pretty much a Boy Scout when it comes to this type of written stuff, and if anyone cared, it's just a terrific documentation of sort of the legal issue and, and the different sides.
Is that on the website?
Yeah. I think it is. If you're, if you're on the web here, you can take a look at estabrookcouncil.org and, or .com, I'm not sure, and see if the Frequently Asked Questions is there. At the end of the day, the, what's going on here is the town does not have an easement, and they are asking the court to give them an easement. The landowners own the trail, and are asking the court not to award the town an easement. That is sort of the shortest summary of the lawsuit. The, the town has specifically stated their goal is only the control of the one trail, but the problem here is that you just can't frame it as such, because as soon as they own and open that access point to the public, then the public are entering what is essentially private land and will do what they do. I mean, the, but you cannot control the public and their dogs and what have you, and so you're basically allowing, you're kind of allowing the Internet to rule, and all you've got left is the park with regards to that access point. So, that should do it.
Yeah. And does the town have a statement as to why they are, feel compelled to retrieve this sort of right-of-way that they forsake?
I think there, this is, this is speculation based upon hearsay that, that I've picked up from various bodies. I think the town, and actually, I've heard this from a member of the Select Board. The notion is that the town, if the town foregoes rights on that parcel, then it's setting precedent for where they might also lose rights elsewhere around town. I don't know what specific parcels are involved, but I've also heard that that statement flies in the face of the way the, the suit's been brought, so I, I just, I just don't know truth. I think at the end of the day, a number of influential Concordians rose up and challenged the notion that the Rasmussens could control this parcel of land, and urged the town to do everything they could, and once the lawsuit started, it was kind of unstoppable. At the end of the day, especially when the law is fuzzy, or, or the, especially when the private landowners have what looks to be the edge in, in sort of law and logic, a lot of this goes to how deep are your pockets? And I, I just can't imagine how large the town's appetite might be, but we will see.
Mm-hmm.
Especially when there's some wealthy landowners whose appetite is, is high.
Yeah, yeah.
The whole situation is extremely unfortunate. I think Anna and Neil sought to try and sort of open a channel, a number of us tried to help, and I think the, the, the legal train had kind of left the station. And I think that at the end of the day, letting the land court do its thing is the right, probably, probably the right and only path, and then maybe something can happen.
We have a comment from Sylvia.
Would you want me--
Sure, yeah, if you want to come up.
Oh, I never said Nick Darboll off 289 Russell.
Sylvia Willard, Conservation Administrator, but also, I live on Ellis Hill Road, which is in the Estabrook Woods. Neighbor. Just to let you know regarding the lawsuit, the town clerk in Concord has been into Town Hall during the Christmas break and approached the planning board, and also I worked with her a little bit to look at, and she photographed some of the documents we have on our side of the town line. The town line in Carlisle is very close to Kibbe Place, so there's some, some planning board documents, A and R plans, et cetera, I believe they were of that area. And also, we have a conservation restriction on that private land that allows for public access into the woods there, so. So, just wanted you to know that they officially, town of Concord has been over looking at what we've got.
And John Baker and Nina Nielsen, who I think are Concordians, is that correct?
Yeah, they live in Concord, but their access is in Carlisle.
Right. Are named in the lawsuit. So, there's a number of landowners being named, and in other words, Concord's trying to ensure access up and down.
Mm-hmm. Interesting.
The biggest worry is awaking the sleeping giant, which is Harvard.
Yeah.
And if someone at Harvard got greedy and said, "Well, the heck with it, let's monetize that land," a word I've always hated, "Boy, that's valuable land." So, anyway, hope that was helpful.
It was, very much so.
Just one more comment. Ken Hart, Estabrook Road. Only comment on John Baker and Nina Nielsen, who own the Carlisle end, north end of the Estabrook Trail, not only did they give a conservation restriction on that property, but they also, within that restriction, is permanent public access. And yet, they're being sued to provide public access. So, no good deed is going unpunished here.
And that saying is well put, because it's true of many, many issues around all this. Anyway, I actually printed this out, so I'm happy to leave it with you.
Okay.
That fact is really good reading, if you care about the issue.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, very unfortunate. Is there any other public comment? Move on to the, yeah, thanks again.
Sure, thank you.
Uh-oh, you lost him, but he's still on the phone.
I'm just telling him to come back if he wants to try calling you.
Oh, so Kerry, Jen's logged into Skype, if you want to try calling her that way.
Oh, okay, all right, well, that's good. I'll give it a try.
Okay, sounds good.
Don't hang up before you do though.
Just stay on the line.
Stay on the line.
So, we'll move on to the...
Is he gonna call me or I'm gonna call her?
I think he's...
Why don't you call her?
Okay, I'm doing it right now.
Okay. All right, so we'll move on to the 7:30 agenda item. Pete, you want to come on up? Or actually, yeah, and I don't know if...
I think it's the internet just dropped him.
Well...
Yeah, see, we'll just have a look, and then we'll, lost him here too.
I'm just bringing Jen's on in first.
Yeah, it might be the Internet at Town Hall. It might be the Internet at Town Hall bill. I'm just...
Where's Nathan?
I know.
Nathan's, that's his...
He's at work dealing with Internet issues, probably. Sorry, sorry.
Yeah, no problem. So, Tim had asked me to come in and kind of present a little bit on our budget, and I was gonna incorporate kind of a little bit bigger of a conversation on basically our efforts right now in Planning Board and what may or may not require budget items in the future. So, basically, that was the first thing. The second thing we wanted to do is talk about pathways and the collaboration between Planning Board and pathways. So, right now, within Planning Board, we have two efforts that would require any sort of budget change. One is master planning, the other one is a proposal that we have out there for GIS data. Based on conversations last night, both of these have kind of taken a new slant, but they're both still active. So, for master planning, we're kind of getting off to a slow start for this phase two. I know Kerry was the appointed member for the phase, for the first part of it, where we're trying to get a work plan together. We completed that as part of the Master Plan Steering Committee, presented it to the Planning Board, and really started deliberation on it last night. So, we're a little bit behind where we wanted to be. We were talking about budget numbers back in September, and here we are now just really going over and approving the work plan. So, what we ended up doing last night is we ended up basically approving two things, right? We approved the formation of what we call the Steering Committee now for master plan. We have three members at the moment, or kind of two members, but we are coming here for that third member. So, we have an appointed Planning Board member, which would be me. Jan Corneal has agreed to stay on as the chair. And we would also like to ask that Kerry Kissinger, if he's willing, stay on, but that would be up to the Board of Selectmen. The main thing is that we have an appointed member from the Board of Selectmen, an appointed selectman on the committee, and if Kerry would be willing, we'd be happy to have him, you know, continue on for this next phase. The big difference, so everyone knows, between what we did and what we're doing now is in the first phase, we did a work plan. So, we stayed away from, we stayed away from content, we stayed away from what are those issues and things we wanted to address in a master plan, and we just looked at timing. We think it's going to be about a two-year process. We think it's going to cost about $100,000. We came up with a general plan to say, you know, in phase, the first phase, we're calling Phase Zero, nobody likes that term, but that's really what it is. It's a preparation phase, it's generating RFPs, it's starting to do intra-Town Hall discovery. What are all the different boards up to? What are the things that are high in people's priority lists? What we really kind of determined last night in the Planning Board is we didn't feel comfortable now asking for the money for Phase One and Two until we can get that RFP finalized. So, we're not going to put that on the town warrant for this year. We would look to put that, you know, in a future year, once we kind of get a finalized RFP, and we can actually talk to some of the consultants out there that might be able to provide those RFP services to finalize those numbers. So, at that point, there's really no ask for the budget for master planning at this point. We're going to try to get off the ground and start the planning process with internal resources and keep it moving that way, at least until we get to the point where we can come up with a concrete RFP determining exactly what we want to do and what that would cost. So, I know that was a little bit different than I think what you guys were anticipating, but that was the vote of the board last night, and the board voted unanimously to support this approach for that. The second thing in our budget was GIS data. This is still going around, but what we ended up voting on a board last night is to pare back what we're asking and only ask for an increase in our subscription cost to cover the creation of an online GIS platform, which is provided by Esri ArcGIS, so that we can start to get it off the ground and start to build a business case as to why it's going to be necessary and why it's going to be used in town. So, on the Planning Board, there was a lot of discussion about, hey, how do we know, you know, where that money's going to go? Well, the thing that we're going to do is we're going to try to, we have some, you know, resources that we're going to be using in the master planning process that may be able to start to build some of the base data layers in GIS. So, what we wanted to do is start to say, hey, let's get that dog and pony show together, right? Let's get some models out there and some demonstrations about how it's going to be useful, work with the different town departments to make sure that we have the data that they need, and start from that perspective. Now, with that said, I also met with Melissa Stamp this morning, and I know that they have a request out there to increase from their assess pro, the capabilities of that to include some of the GIS. I would wholeheartedly, as a Planning Board, support that method, because that would be a very good gateway into getting data into our own complete comprehensive GIS platform. So, if they come in front of you guys, just know that, you know, we didn't talk about this Planning Board yet, because I just was doing some of this discovery this morning, but as Chair of the Planning Board and somebody who's really pushing the GIS, I think that that would be an essential component to get that GIS engine that they're proposing in place, so that we would have a gateway to get that data back into ours, our system or our comprehensive land use system later on. So, what we're asking for specifically for our budget now is an increase in our subscription fee cost from $90 to $600 a year. The $600 for this year, and I want to be clear about why I'm just saying for this year, that $600 for this year includes just a $42 a month licensing fee for contributor license for the ArcGIS online product. I want to be careful, because we, it's a software-as-a-service-based model, so I don't want, when I go to FinCom, I don't want to say I want, what is it, $504 a year? I want to say I want to cover the cost of a license on an annual basis going forward. So, if next year it's $600, instead of $504, it's $600, we're not going to be making this argument every single year to get it going. What our plan with GIS then would be to do that dog and pony show and then come back with a more comprehensive plan to say, this is what we think town-wide we need as a licensing strategy, this is the type of data that we're going to get out of it, these are the users of it, and these are what those users will be doing for it, and then these are the contributors, because that's the important part. How are we going to get the mapping data in there and maintain it? So, once we get a better plan for that, then I'd feel a little bit more comfortable coming back asking for the money to fund any consulting fees necessary to build that data set and maintain it. So, I think that's where we were with the budget right now. Are there any questions about that? No?
I don't know. I think that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, okay. Great. So, the only other thing is pathways. And there's been some go-around on this, because I think I came to Tim a while back presenting the idea of getting a Planning Board member on there, but I didn't know you guys went ahead with that vote.
I thought that meant you were volunteering.
You're on it. I was, no, I was. I definitely was, and I'm on it. But that kind of changes tonight's conversation, because tonight's conversation was a little bit, was going to be more about reporting structure, but talking with Deb and the Planning Board last night, we think that what you guys already voted on gives us what we need. We just want to make sure as more projects come in, you know, on the Planning Board side, that we have a collaboration, and we're trying to really maximize the communication for planning across pathways and Planning Board. So, right now, you know, we think that that will give us a very good position to work, to have our resources help pathways, and to have pathways have a conduit into planning a little bit better. The one thing I wanted to make sure, though, because I didn't know that the vote happened last meeting, was that you didn't appoint Pete Gambino as a citizen, but you elected to appoint a planning, have a Planning Board appointee, you know, for it, which is something to me that would formalize that relationship going forward past the current members of any committee, and that's the only thing I wanted to ask.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure we appointed you as a member of the Planning Board.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, if we can confirm that, and it doesn't have to be done tonight, but if we can confirm that, and that I think Deb...
We can vote it again if we did it.
Yeah.
Correctly.
Yep.
In a minute.
Yeah, appoint Peter Gambino to be the designated Planning Board Representative on the Pathways.
Okay.
With a term expiring June 30th, 2025.
2020, oh, I'm here forever.
2018.
Yeah, now just a one year.
Excellent. Deb, was there anything else we wanted to cover tonight on that?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, awesome.
Great.
So, that is all I had to do tonight.
So, well, yeah.
Yeah, like to keep it simple.
Great, thanks, Pete. Yeah, sorry, is there any, do you have any comment from the audience? I gotta do better about asking for public comments, yeah. I don't do that much. All right, so we'll move on to the eight o'clock one.
By continuing to serve, I'd be happy to continue to serve on the Steering Committee.
Okay, yeah, I mean, we can, I don't think they need a decision right now, but...
Fine with that.
Yeah, Melinda heard you, so, yeah. So, you're on the hook. Yeah, we can discuss that meeting if you want, whatever it is here.
If you set up, we're all good.
Oh, no, Pete just talked, as I can say. So, yeah, it's, you know, I think there's still time, so we can discuss it when, because Nathan's not here either, you know, so we can discuss it at a later date, if you want. We'll put up, oh, getting called in again. So, yeah, we'll set that on.
Just drop it.
It doesn't have to be a long conversation.
It's quite distracting.
Either the next meeting or the meeting after that.
Next time.
It's just so slow dialing.
Have a good night, David. Thanks for your helping.
Thank you.
I guess we're gonna have to move out, because it's gonna, and we'll probably need to turn the screen back down, or no?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, are you gonna project there or there?
I think we're gonna use the screen.
You're gonna have to point him this way, so we can see the...
It took like 20 minutes to get that screen on.
Is that okay?
What does he see? Okay, because we're gonna have a presentation.
Oh, Kerry? I'm gonna turn you towards the board. Sure.
If we never want a snapper. Oh, boy.
Do you want to make a call? Please hang up and go again.
There we go. Would I like to make a call?
Yes. Hello.
Mood lighting.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
There it is.
There's the clicker.
Perfect, yeah.
This is where we're at.
It's TMI.
Okay, it's working.
Hi, welcome.
Thank you.
We've got to point it to six, please. Yeah.
It's some six on there. Six additional.
Are we having trouble getting it to show up?
There it is.
Yeah, there it is. Sometimes projector at home, it's having a rush to the front. Sometimes it goes right on, and other times it's like, what is the problem with this?
There's no signal. There it is. I think it's coming out. Should come out.
There you go.
Someone should turn it off. One on the left and one on the right. There's a few doors on there. Too much, huh?
Okay, Rosa?
Yep. So, I'm Bob Zog, 953 North Road, and I'm also the Carlisle coach for the Heat Smart program that we're going to talk about today. As you recall, back in August, at the August 8 Board of Selectmen meeting, we last talked about this, so I'll give you an update on what's happened since then. So, for background for everyone else who might be watching or listening, Heat Smart Mass is a community-based education and group purchasing program for clean heating and cooling technologies, and it's funded by the Massachusetts Clean Energy Center and the Department of Energy Resources, conceptually similar to the Solarized Mass program we ran several years ago. The focus is on the residential sector, although the products involved can be used in small commercial applications. There's really towns, communities that bid on this program could bid for one to four technologies, air-source heat pumps, ground-source heat pumps, modern wood heating, and solar water heating. We ended up with three, but I'm getting ahead of myself a bit. So, brief history, the solicitation from MASCEC came out in late July 2017. As I mentioned earlier, at the August 8 Board Meeting, we talked about this, and the Board of Selectmen endorsed moving ahead with a proposal. This was teamed with Concord and Lincoln, so it's a three-town team, and at that point, we decided to focus on the air-source heat pump technology. Now, we submitted our proposal in mid-September, and after submitting the proposal, the MASCEC asked bidders if they would consider adding some technologies, because they were, they didn't receive bids for all technologies that interested them. So, we talked with you a little bit more and decided that we would expand our offering to include ground-source heat pumps and modern wood heating, and I'll explain what that is in a minute. So, we went in, ultimately, we had three technologies, and then in mid-November, MASCEC announced awards, four different teams, seven communities across the state in total, and Carlisle, Concord, and Lincoln received an award. So, that's great news, fantastic opportunity, and this three-town community group is really the largest team in the state that's got an award, so. So, a few more details, while this effort is heavily dependent on volunteers, of course, we're getting a lot of support, which is really making this all possible. With the three towns combined, we are eligible for marketing grants of up to $18,000. It's $6,000 per town, and there'd be a separate contract with each town. We've signed our contract, and we should be getting our initial allotment of $3,000 fairly soon, I guess, would guess in the next week or so. Good news, we don't have to operate like a bank, offering zero interest. We get the money upfront, we spend out of that allotment, and so there's no fronting the money. the money, and that's great news. A lot easier to run. Probably even more importantly than the money here, which is critical in itself, is the support we're getting from the technical consultants that M.A.S.C.E.C. has hired on our behalf. And this is the Meister Consultants Group, recently acquired by Cadmus, and they're providing design and hosting of the website with lots of input from us, of course. They're designing marketing collaterals that we will print and publish. They're helping with the selection of the installers who will put these technologies in. They're going to guide us through the evaluation of those installer bids, but we, this three-town community, will select the installers. It will be our choice. And they will also help present at some of our community events. Other things that are very important is that M.A.S.C.E.C. is taking, they handled the installer solicitation, the bids were due on January 5. I haven't heard any reports yet on what, how many bids came in. And they are also going to sign the contracts with the installers, so the towns don't have to be bothered with signing contracts with the installers. It's M.A.S.C.E.C. takes care of that. So those are all great things that, we couldn't do this without this kind of support. So here's a message really to the town of Carlisle and our residents, and why would anyone be interested in this program and participating? It's really going to offer a unique opportunity for residents in our three towns to upgrade their home heating and cooling systems. Well, why would you want to do that? Right at the top, I'm gonna start with comfort. Comfort, comfort, comfort. This isn't the Jimmy Carter days of cardigan sweaters, turn down the thermostat and freeze so we can save a little on energy. That didn't go over well. You can actually save energy, reduce your carbon outputs, and be more comfortable. These systems operate with variable capacity, they tune right into the amount of heating or cooling your home needs. It's really sweet, they're quiet. Oh, on top of that, you reduce your carbon footprint. And you save money through this program. We don't know how much money we'll save, but the target is about a 15% savings on the total installed cost of the equipment. And depending on the type of fuel you're using to heat your home now, and this is an important caveat, you should see energy savings. Now, say, it depends on the fuel, with natural gas, these technologies will not compete on energy cost. They'll still save carbon and environmental impacts, but they won't compete on cost. At the other extreme, if you're heating your home with electricity, they should save you a lot. Other fuels fall in between, and we'll get that information out to folks and where the costs land. Another big thing about a program like this is it takes out a lot of the hassle and the risks for people. You know, this, this stuff is overwhelming for anyone to figure out and tackle and get the right installer. And here, we're going to be vetting the installers on behalf of the community. It's a competitive selection process, and so you get that assurance, and we're gonna provide a lot of educational materials, so people will hear from someone other than the installer, you know, what this technology is about. So hopefully that will make it easy for people to do what they would like to do. I'm just gonna touch very briefly on the technologies. We talked in August a lot about air source heat pumps, but just a reminder, two things. First of all, these are advanced heat pumps. These are not the old-fashioned heat pumps that were really junk. These things are much more efficient, much more comfortable, and much more reliable. On top of that, we're covering two types of general categories of heat pumps. There's the ductless variety that do not require any duct work in your home, and there's also the more traditional central ducted systems will be part of the program as well. We haven't selected any products yet that will come with the installer bid evaluation process, so these are just generic examples in the pictures. Ground source heat pumps, we didn't talk too much about that last time, but this is really the ultimate heating solution if you're concerned about environmental impacts. This is taking heat from the ground, pumping it into your house, or in the summer, taking heat out of your house and pumping it back into the ground. Much more efficient than an air source heat pump, but also much costly, much more costly. Modern wood heating. What we're really talking about here, our whole-house central heating systems fueled with wood pellets. It's not a pellet stove. This is a whole-house seating system. You don't touch the pellets, it's all automated handling from the delivery of the pellets to putting them into the combustion chamber, all automated, boom. Very efficient compared to traditional pellet or cordwood heating systems, and the particulate submissions are way, way lower. So if people are concerned about particulates, this is a much more cleaner solution compared to a conventional pellet stove or certainly a wood stove, cordwood stove. So we have a lot to learn about this technology. It's new to us as well, so we're still coming up to speed, but we'll certainly stay a step ahead so we can help answer questions. One last technology we're sneaking in under the radar because it's important to us, it's not officially part of the program, but heat pump water heaters apply heat pump technology to home water heating. This is for your showers and dishwashing, clothes washing, and whatnot. We're trying to fit it in because it saves a lot of energy, it saves a lot of cost, and if you're using electric, electricity to heat water, it's almost a no-brainer. There are a few situations where you can't use them, but most homes could use this product if they heat with water, heat with electricity, excuse me. So, just a quick overview of the technologies and now installation goals. First, I want to say, we intentionally tried to stay very realistic, okay? These technologies don't have the recognition that solar has. It's just a fact of life. In fact, there's even some negative information out there about heat pumps, the old heat pumps of 20 years ago, that we have to overcome. So in any case, we're talking in Carlisle about 20 air source heat pumps for the total team, about 105, okay? We hope we do better, but that's where we're targeting right now. Air source heat pumps are still going to be the largest part of this program, it's just the cost is much lower than the other two technologies, so we're being realistically modest in our goals for the other two technologies. But again, with a program like this, it's not so much about what do we do over the next five or six months, it's how does this help seed the market in the long term and get people accustomed to the technologies, and then to hear from their neighbor, hey, I got one, and, you know, years down, we hope that there's going to be a follow-up benefit. Timeline, I won't go through all the details in the timeline at the bottom, but the most important points here is that it's a short program. We're hoping to launch the signup period at the end of February, beginning of March, and it's only gonna run for five months. That's a short window. And what has to happen in that five months is you have to get to the point where the homeowner has signed a contract with the installer. The system doesn't have to be installed, but the contract has to be signed to be under this, to get the benefit of the discount under this program. And there's also a couple other things that may need to happen. And one is if you want the rebates available from the state, you need to have a free home energy audit through MassSave. That's free, it's not hard to do, but there could be a lead time of a month or two to get that audit. If you want to apply for a zero-interest loan from MassSave, which is a great idea, great, but there's gonna be a lead time to get that loan approved. So these are the things that make the timing tricky, and folks need to be aware of it. And my message tonight to the community is, whether you think you're interested in one of these technologies or not right now, get your free home energy audit. Just go on the MassSave website and sign up for it. A couple hours of your time, you might get some free lights, you might get a lot of other things that are beneficial. If there's some simple things you can do to your home in terms of air sealing and insulation, get that done first if you can, because if you want to put in a heating, a new heating system, you want it to be sized for your home after it's insulated, not before it's insulated. Otherwise, you might get, the installer may not get the sizing right. So in our proposal, we offered support on behalf of the town, including the volunteer efforts, and Tim has been already very busy and doing a great job as our municipal representative. I can't tell you how much easier it makes for Tim to be trying to get inputs from various people in Town Hall. He knows where to go and how to ask, and I don't, so that's been great. A few other things here as well that are fairly straightforward. A couple things we'll need to take action on. One is, this is our first briefing under the program. At our Board of Selectmen meetings, we offered to do periodic briefings. We didn't put a schedule in our proposal, so it's up to the board really how often. I'm proposing a total of four. We can do more than this, we can do less, it's really up to you. And I can, you know, work with Tim to schedule that. But I just, let me just pause for a minute and see if you have any initial reaction and how often you'd like to see me up here, reporting to you, more importantly, reporting to the community about where we are and what we're doing.
That schedule seems fine to me.
Okay.
Couple of months.
Yeah, I mean, if you see it as a useful way to, you know, promote the program, you know, then-
Absolutely.
Yeah.
That's my selfish interest.
I think we're always sold on it.
That I know.
Yeah, yeah, so, I mean, it might be more for your benefit than it would be per se for our benefit.
Well, it's the community benefit here, so it's really a question of-
Right, that's what I mean, yeah.
But wasn't, so I would come, I'd come to every meeting, but, you know, you've got other things to do, so.
You may want to put another one in there sometime, you know, in April or June, if outreach is-
Okay.
Right, yeah.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, if it's only a five-month program, you probably want to front-load it rather than-
Or we could just play it by ear, you know, see how it goes in January, March, and is talking to us generating any interest and so forth.
Okay. Okay, well, let's plan on five and, you know, just propose something to me, Tim, and I'll just make sure I'm open on those dates and we'll go. And the other thing is, Luke, you offered to make a public endorsement of the program, so that's up to you how you do that, but I had sent it to Tim, and I just handed around a hard copy tonight of some draft texts that could be a press release or a letter to the editor of the mosquito, or however you think's appropriate. The one thing that's missing right now, and I hope to have within a week, is an active link that takes you to, takes one to a landing page where you can at least get some initial information about the program. It won't be fully populated yet, but it'll have some information, and most importantly, a place where we can capture contact information and alert people when to go back and get everything else, and then also links to get your free home energy audit and those sorts of things, so. Yeah, and the last slide here is really just showing the current list of volunteers on this. Bill's been very helpful and active as well, and we'll be pulling in other people as we go forward, and hopefully even some of our high school students doing their volunteer bit here as well. That came up last night in our Carlisle Energy Task Force meeting. So that's it, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Yeah, no, this is a great program, and, yeah, I mean, thanks for all the effort and, you know, getting the grant, I mean, that's huge. So, yeah, I mean, I think, you know, we'll try to promote this as much as we can.
That'd be great. I mean, people cannot hear about it too many times. We all know that once, twice, three times is, people have to see things seven, eight, nine times before it even registers.
Oh, there you go. Yeah, that's the way to do it.
Did you want to say something?
Well, no, I was just wondering, is there something concrete, a motion, or, you know, you said a press release from the Board of Selectmen. I don't know, did Board of Select, did the Board of Selectmen issue press releases?
Show, show, yeah. The mosquito's in your packet, a template of a press release, but it could be in any form that Luke for the Board is comfortable with.
Is there something that we would do, we need to vote and say we approve, you know, to, of this program, and we'd like to make sure the Carlisle public, you know, is aware of it, and-
That you can open up the memo.
Oh, I'm sorry, did you want to?
So there's a draft memo in there, we can tweak it a little bit.
Yeah, I didn't want to show it publicly until you've had a chance to look at it, see if you like it.
Yeah, I'd like to tweak it a little bit, but I mean, I, it doesn't need to come from me, it can come from the Board. I mean, I'm perfectly-
Yeah, I was just wondering whether we need to make a vote now so that this press release can go out, you know, as an officially sanctioned, you know, press release.
Yeah.
Hello, Kerry.
I don't think you can hear me on screen, can you?
Um-
That's good.
Yeah, we're getting feedback.
We're getting feedback, though.
Can you hear me, Kelly?
Nope.
Oh, gee.
Yeah.
Could I make a comment, Bob?
Yeah, of course.
This is Kerry. I just, I think the sooner you can get, you know, the, the, your cost can be recovered in six years, five years, whatever those numbers are by type of fuel or whatever, the sooner you can get that out, the better, because, you know, you'll get people's attention a lot better, they can see the payback period is, you know, shorter than they're used to seeing. And my other comment is, I've done the energy audit, I've done the additional insulation in our house, I've done the interest-free loan, I've done all those processes, and they were painless and they were very effective, and if you want to have a poster child to support, that, those kind of aspects of this program, I'd be happy to, you know, personally vouch for how effective that can be.
Oh, thank you, thank you, Kerry.
Those aspects, I think, are terrific.
Excellent, thanks, I'm glad to hear that.
The sooner you can get payback information out, I think the more interest you'll get, and time seems to be really of the essence here.
Yes, I agree. Well, we're, we are working at issue with the technical consultants, and it's, well, I won't go into details, but it is because you're changing fuels, it is a little complicated, it's quite sensitive to fuel prices.
Like solar, where it's just-
Yeah, so, we're gonna, we're gonna crack that nut and figure out how to present the cost information, and we're gonna be fair and honest. That's one thing we're all committed to here. It's not, we're promoting, we're not, we're not selling, that's the way I put it. This is, people need to know, best numbers we can give them, what the facts are.
Excellent. Yeah, so that memo, I don't know if everybody's a chance to read it.
You had some edits that you wanted to make.
Yeah, I haven't actually made them, but, yeah, I think if we tweak it, for the most part, I think it's there, you know, but we can tweak it to make it from the Board, if folks are comfortable with that.
I mean, if it's just minor tweaks that you were gonna make, I'd be fine approving it now from the Board of Selectmen, if that's what you want.
Yeah, yeah, I'd prefer it to be from the Board, as opposed to just make-
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
As long as you're not gonna change it to "we don't encourage."
No, 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 yeah, yeah. Well, yeah, it's more so instead of the "I" stuff, the "we," you know?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah, somebody.
Okay, you want a motion?
You want to make a motion? No?
Kate wants to, she's-
All right, I can make a motion.
Her clock is-
Okay, all right, I can make a motion. I move that we, that we approve or sanction, or, you know, I don't know what, sanction, approve, okay. The issuance of a press release on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, worded according to what Robert Zog has presented here today, with minor wording changes to indicate a collective endorsement of the Board of Selectmen.
And a minor-
Sure.
Excellent. Yeah, so that memo, I don't know if everybody's a chance to read it.
You had some edits that you wanted to make.
Yeah, I haven't actually made them, but, yeah, I think if we tweak it, for the most part, I think it's there, you know, but we can tweak it to make it from the Board, if folks are comfortable with that.
I mean, if it's just minor tweaks that you are going to make, I'd be fine approving it now from the Board of Selectmen, if that's what you want.
Yeah, yeah, I'd prefer it to be from the Board, as opposed to just making it.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
As long as you're not going to change it to "we don't encourage".
No, 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 yeah.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, it's more so instead of the "I" stuff, the "we", you know?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah, somebody...
Okay, you want to...
Motion?
No, Kate wants to, she's...
All right, I can make a motion.
Her clock is...
Okay, all right, I'm gonna make a motion. I move that we, that we approve, or sanction, or, you know, I don't know what, sanction, approve, okay. The issuance of a press release on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, worded according to what Robert Zog has presented here today, with minor wording changes to indicate a collective endorsement of the Board of Selectmen.
And that, minor amendment, if I may, and that we support the mass, the Heat Smart Mass program.
Hmm, accepted.
Yeah, okay.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? So, we've got to do a roll call with Kerry on. We're gonna have to do a roll call. Oscar, a little eye.
Reed, eye.
Brown, eye.
Funros, gun eye.
Just your eye.
You only get one vote, Kerry.
Yeah, yeah, twice, Kerry. He figures he's over here and he's over there.
We have, we had a super quorum there.
There you go.
Yeah.
Great. All right, so, yeah, so we'll tweak that, and you don't need to see a final copy. Oh, actually, can you send the Word doc?
Oh, I think I gave you a Word doc.
Do we have it?
I think, I think we have it.
Okay.
And I also owe you the link.
Yeah, yeah, and the link in the...
Yeah, there's a link there, you know, insert link here.
We don't have it yet. We don't have the landing page yet, but I, my recommendation is to wait until there's a active link before you publish it, otherwise...
Right, yeah, defeats the purpose.
People need to be able to click on it when they, they see the press release.
Yeah, no, exactly. And just, is, does the Energy Task Force have a website on the town website, or have a page on the town website?
There is a page.
Okay. Yeah, if not, we can make a link from the Board of Selectmen.
I'm pretty sure there's a page because with the Carlyle Solar Challenge, it became important because we wanted a jumping off place to then go to Carlyle Solar Challenge page.
Yeah, there is a Green Carlyle site, but it's not active, not being maintained.
Okay.
Maybe just have it off of the town website, if you could.
Yeah, I would...
It's the Selectmen's page or...
I should have brought that up, but we definitely would like to have a link to the Heat Smart website on our town page, and maybe a copy of this press release as well.
Yeah, there is, there is an Energy, I'm almost certain there's an Energy Task Force page, or there was one, maybe it got, what?
It's stale.
Well, I'm sure it is.
But I would make it a one-click from our web, our town website to Heat Smart.
Say we have...
That would be my recommendation.
Make it as prominent as possible.
Yeah, we'll get, you know, either from the Board's page or...
Yeah, all right. Sounds good, great, thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Claude, because you're on that group as well.
Well, yes, I, I, yes, I am. I've helped a little bit, and I've done nowhere near as much work as Bill and Bob.
All right, so we've done the 8:30, so we're flying. It's done.
Yes.
This is done?
Yep. Yeah, so we'll move on to our 8:45 town administrative report.
Okay, just a few items in my report tonight. The first item, which is the, we had scheduled the Clark Room for a proposed public hearing on the deer hunting regulations, but it turns out that January 30th might not be a good date for some of the Board members, so we're talking about maybe changing that, is that right?
Yeah, so Kerry and I can't make it.
And I'm on a red eye coming home from California.
Okay. Sounds like that's not gonna work.
Yeah, so we want to...
Okay.
Look for another...
Sorry about that.
Thanks for that.
But Lee said she's more than willing to give the presentation again, which is good, so we'd be more just the sounding board, as opposed to the ones actually doing the presentation, so...
Very good. The second item in my report is that the School Committee is putting together their bargaining team for the negotiations for a successor teachers' contract, contract with the Teachers Association. There's a scheduling meeting this week. Historically, a member of this Board, you know, usually the chairman, but not always the chairman, has been a member of the bargaining team, so...
See, you've been through these recently, haven't you? Yeah, right. Yeah. Is it typically the Chair?
It has been, in recent history, but, you know, if it's something that someone else has more time, it can be made fairly frequently.
Typically, they usually during the middle of the day, too, very often, right after the school.
Or afternoon, yeah, yeah, right.
You know, it's after, it's not evenings.
How often do you think they'll be meeting? You know, what's historically, how...
I think it's every, every few weeks, probably, until they get a deal, so it could be, you know, twice a month kind of commitment, usually in, you know, early afternoon kind of thing, right after school gets out, is the best time.
But there's no deadline, is there? In other words, it's open-ended?
Well, yeah, well, when's the end of the, you know, there is and there isn't.
Yeah, there is and there isn't, right.
Yeah, I mean, they do have a contract ending, they usually like to try to do it, wrap things up and vote on it before the end of the...
But if it's contentious and they can't agree, then it can go on, right?
Yes.
The current contract terms continue until a new agreement's reached, so...
Right.
With town meeting coming up, you know, it's kind of ideal to have it done when the budget's passed or approved by town meeting.
Yeah, so, I mean, if it's right after school, then I can probably, it's not, as long as it's not like noon.
No.
No, because the teachers aren't available at noon.
Yeah, no, exactly. As long as it's not right in the middle of the day, yeah, I can do it a couple of times a month. You know, I mean, unless somebody else has a burning desire to do it, but...
I mean, I feel like I have no, like, zero experience. My feeling would be that we should engage, like, somebody who knows this business. I mean, not necessarily, you know, a lawyer or whatever, but somebody who's negotiated on behalf of towns before and knows the ropes.
The School Committee, they do have an attorney.
Yeah, they have an attorney.
They have an attorney.
The School Committee has their representatives, and they have counsel specifically for these negotiations.
Okay.
So, this is the, the town representative on the bargaining team.
Okay.
Because under the statute, it's either a member of the Board, a selectman gets to be at the table with the School Committee, but they do, they do, they are represented by counsel.
And how long is this contract for, you know?
It normally says three years.
Three years.
Yeah, so they're at the tail end of a three-year agreement, so they're looking for a three-year successor agreement.
I'd say if you have the time, stick with the Chair doing it.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, Kerry, do you want to weigh in?
Well, you know, from here, that wouldn't be appropriate for me to be, I, I agree with what Claude said, we need to get as much experience with having done this before as we can on our side of the table.
Well, that's where I have the experience, because I was actually a lead negotiator, because in Concord, we didn't have a, an attorney. We had the, the School Committee actually negotiate it directly. So, I did that for two, twice, once for Concord Public and once for the Regional, so...
That's terrific.
But if the Chair is always on it, you know, there's no reason not to have the Chair do it.
What strikes me is that it's, the School Committee is not the, sort of, the authority that raises taxes, you know, that sets the ultimate, that sets the tax rate. So, their incentive is a little bit different than somebody who's, you know, responsible to the public to say, okay, well, this is what the tax rate's going to be. So, it's, to me, a little bit interesting that the sort of hired gun, or the experienced person is being hired and is loyal to, or whatever, is working for the School Committee and not for the Board of Selectmen. I mean, that seems to me a little bit, not necessarily, exact, their interests aren't exactly aligned with our interests on the Board of Selectmen. I'm all new at all, but I'm just, I'm maybe on, like, way off base here, but that's...
Yeah, so, I don't know, I mean, is it, do they represent the town or the School Committee?
They represent the School Committee. It's not, yeah, it's not Town Council, they have a...
No, 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 right, but it's...
But they're being paid by...
They're being paid by the School Committee.
School Committee out of their budget.
Correct.
So, they're, are serving the interests of the School Committee, not, not the Board of Selectmen.
Ultimately, the School Committee is kind of... They'd argue they serve the town's interests in general, they're not, you know...
Right, they are a council.
They're part of the town.
They're elected by the town.
Right, right, they're part of the town, but they're not the ones who, although in practice, perhaps they do determine the tax rate to a large extent.
That's not really their, you know, people, you know... I don't think that they'd be going in there and saying, hey, we should give 50% increase just because we want to get through this quickly, or anything like that.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm not, yeah, but there might be maybe more or less willingness, you know, slight difference, maybe.
How many people are on this committee?
There are five, five members?
So, it's a couple from the School Committee, one for the Board of Selectmen, probably a jury, somebody community at large or something?
The superintendent.
Yeah, yeah, usually the superintendent is a resource.
Superintendent is definitely usually, and/or the chief financial officer.
That's right.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, Kerry Colbert, our finance director is part of the bargaining team, too.
Concord, it was the CFO.
So, it'd be Kerry, Jim, somebody from the Board of Selectmen, and one or two people from the School Committee.
School Committee, yeah. I think Dave Modell is the School Committee representative, and the attorney for the School Committee. So, it might just be five then, right?
Yeah.
So, how does it work if, if you don't come to an agreement and you continue with the current contract? The contracts typically, from what I've seen, they, they're not, you know, homogeneous across the, if it's a three-year contract, it's not the same. Year one is often different from year two is often different from year three. Like, raises may actually, the biggest raise may come in year three, for instance.
Or year one.
Yeah.
Or year one. I'm wondering, so if...
There's no wage increase until there's a new agreement, and then sometimes it's a retroactive increase.
Yes, it costs you big time.
Six months or a year past the expiration date to settle.
Oh, I see, so, the wage, it's not that, oh, well, we had a wage increase in the last year, so the next...
The terms of the contract remain the same, but there's no change in wages until you have a new agreement.
The contract start date is the date of the end of the previous agreement.
Right, yeah, normally it's July 1, it would start, and...
Yeah.
For three years.
Yeah, we must have some historical data as to what the rates have been and what average salaries are, and, right, we, it's not like we're going to this blind and just...
No, 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 I mean, and there's a lot of data, you know, on the town, on the state website about the cost per pupil, the, you know, the budgets, you know, and, so there's tons and tons of data that one could use, I guess, on either side to say, well, this is reasonable, this is not, and so on and so forth.
Yeah, it's also, you know, it's not just the percentage, you know, the COLA thing, there's also the step increases, and then there's the one, the, you know, the rose where, you know, if you have just a BA or an MA or a PhD, and when you move it up that way, and longevity.
Yeah, and then the, like, with the police longevity, blah, 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 yeah, there's all these...
And those are the things that, where in fact, they get very often, because usually, you know, maybe with a younger faculty, this won't happen, but when you, when I was negotiating, we were getting an aging faculty, and they'd been stuck on the top level, and they wanted to add three new levels because they were sick of being, only getting the COLAs. So, I mean, so there's, it depends upon what the issues are going to be that particular year. And also, at one point, and I don't know how it is here, I'd have to, you know, if I were to do it, I'd have to bone up, but we were buying back the sick leave on retirement, and we negotiated half, you know, only buying back half of it at one point, because that was hugely Aprily for the town. So, and I don't know what it is here, but I mean, there may be a lot of different things that we should be looking at.
Yeah, yeah, it's a multivariate problem.
Exactly.
It's not, it's not just one number, no, yeah.
No, and then, of course, there's the class size type of thing and the number of hours that, you know, you know, office hours or off-duty, or, you know, whether they're going to monitor lunch and recess or not, or, you know, there's all kinds of other little, you know, things that go into all these negotiations.
Hmm.
So, we've been dealing with contract issues.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, so, I mean, if folks are opposed, I'll, I'll take a stab at it. I mean, ultimately, if, I think I'll...
You can always call me if...
Well, I mean, ultimately, I think, you know, even though it's a negotiation, we can probably meet, right, so I can get the Board's...
Well, we meet several times in executive session, typically, right?
Right, yeah, I was gonna say, yeah, so I can bounce stuff off of you guys, it's not just gonna be me doing this.
Ultimately, I think, you know, you're reporting back, and we're saying, yeah, you're going in the right direction, or, so we, I believe that last time we had a couple of opportunities, didn't we?
Last teacher's contract, was John Gorecki?
John Gorecki, we, we had a couple where he would give us updates and...
Exactly.
Say if we were right, if, you know, would, you know...
Right, and if you couldn't make every session, then, you know, maybe Kate could fill in.
Yeah.
I'd be willing to help, I've, you know, poured through the state databases on the schools and stuff, so if you need, like, information about, like, how do we compare to similar communities, you know, school side, blah, blah, I can...
The teachers are going to give you that.
Yeah, I'm sure they will, yeah, yeah, no, I'm sure they...
You mean, because it's in their favor, you think?
Oh, absolutely, they cherry pick which ones that they want, you know?
Well, that's what I'm saying, but I'm saying, I can go and cherry pick the numbers the other way.
Yeah, I think that makes sense, but that's just...
Because, I mean, if they're going to use that weapon, you want to make sure that you can counter it and say, well, okay, yeah, but if we look at it this way, blah, 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 right, you know, so...
Right.
So, I've already delved through some of those numbers, so I can support you that way.
Okay, yeah, no, and that's the thing, I mean, I, I definitely want this to be a collaborative thing with the Board, I mean, I'm not gonna...
I do think it was at least twice that John gave us...
I think so, too.
...updates, so we gave him feedback on what to push back on and things like that, and then he went back to the group.
Okay.
And, I mean, it had an impact.
It did, yeah, 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 well, that's just it, if it's the Board saying something as opposed to just one Board member.
Push a little harder on this one, and, yeah, that one's okay, but...
Yep, okay.
All right, I probably should have a Board vote, at least, appoint.
Appoint, okay, Luke, I move that we appoint Luke to the bargaining committee, or...
Bargaining team.
Bargaining team for the schoolteachers, the Carlyle Public School Teachers Union Contract Renegotiation of 2018.
Second.
With Kate Reed as an alternate.
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense. All right, so it's been moved to the second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Oscar, a little eye.
Just your eye.
Reed, eye.
Brown, eye.
Funros, gun eye.
Good.
We did it right order that time.
Yeah, Kerry, Kerry didn't vote twice.
At least you don't change your vote when you vote twice, you know?
All right, the third item is just a note, in the wake of the passage of the new Tax Cuts and Jobs Act nationally, we had some 625 taxpayers going to Town Hall in the last week of December and...
Increase the job and Tom...
Paying almost 3.7 million dollars in property taxes...
How much?
To the town.
3.7 million.
3.7 million, last week alone. It's still unclear, you know, what portions of that are deductible, but, well, actually, we were accepting only the third and fourth quarter payments because they've been committed, and, you know, those bills are known, but some people wanted to pay ahead two or three years property taxes.
Yeah.
Anyone's really sure what the, what the future may hold, but...
And those who have mortgages, mortgages with escrow accounts might have to be given rebate, you know, return checks, because we can't keep the money if they overpaid. In other words, if both their escrow account and they pay, we have to give them back their money, which is another job for us to do.
Yeah, no, exactly, yeah, so Kerry said that she, Priscilla, the senior tax worker, whose name I forgot. Yeah, no, exactly, yeah, so Kerry said that she, Priscilla, the senior tax worker, whose name I forgot.
It's-
Kathy, is it right?
Kathy, yep, I think Kathy, and then, who's the other woman that works?
I wouldn't say Anya, but this one.
Was it Nancy?
Nancy, yeah, yeah.
All hands on deck last-
Yeah, yeah, and she said basically it's set them back a couple of weeks in terms of time, yeah. And unfortunately, the lock-
Tim, excuse me, Tim, I can only see the top of your head, that's about, and the clock on the wall, could you, that's much better, thank you.
What's wrong with the top of Tim's head?
I know.
I was trying to read his lips, it was tough to do.
And, and a couple of them spent some Saturdays and Sundays also, just-
Yeah, no, exactly, so a huge thanks to those folks for putting in that extra effort. Now they gotta play catch-up, so all that extra effort and now they're behind.
Now they have to do their regular-
Right, exactly, all the things that they weren't able to do over the past couple of weeks. So, yeah, and unfortunately, there's nothing we can really do with that extra money, so-
Can't charge them again?
No, Kerry's gonna look into, you know, maybe some sort of short-term interest thing, but unfortunately-
I asked her about that this morning, she said, basically, they really only got the money for one month extra because normally these things would be due February, so it's, it's not, they can't really invest it or anything.
No, exactly, but, but, yeah. She's gonna look into it either way, but, yeah, no, ultimately, I don't think it's gonna get as much, fourteen cents. Hey, every little bit, right?
Looking ahead to the meeting on the twenty-third, we've got an executive session scheduled regarding litigation. Got officials from the town of Concord coming to talk about the draft inter municipal agreement that they've put together proposing to provide local access, PEG access service to the town. We're gonna have a discussion on the transfer station with the household recycling committee and we'll be hearing from the town clerk and the council on aging on their FY nineteen budget requests. On the thirtieth, well, again, we're gonna try to reschedule that deer hunting hearing. February thirteenth will be our third coordination meeting with the finance committee, long-term caps, CPC and the moderator.
Sorry, real quick, for the, the twenty-third, we're supposed to have the CHNA.
Oh, I'm sorry, they were supposed to, yeah, they were supposed to come tonight and we'll have them in on the twenty-third.
Yeah, their, their meeting was canceled on Thursday because of the snow, so they wanna reschedule that. I'll just bump it to that.
Before I forget, as we get through the, the town meeting, this, I'm sorry, has nothing to do with the schedule, so I will wait.
That's fine, if you wanna, while you're thinking of it.
And thinking about warrants for town meeting, we agree, I believe that we agreed, we had to put a warrant on for turning the land that's at the end of, that's, that's at the town line with Concord?
On Hartwell.
Yeah, off of Hartwell Avenue, just wanna make sure that we don't forget to put that warrant on.
I have that on, on the draft list of warrant articles, which I'll present to you the next time, I can email it to you in, in between, just to show you what, what has come in. We gave people till the middle of this week to get us possible warrant articles that they were contemplating, so by the end of the week, we'll have a pretty good idea of what, what people might be asking for.
Okay.
So, but that's definitely one we've got on the list.
Okay, great.
Yep. Oh, and actually, just one more thing that I mentioned to Tim the other day, so one of the things that frustrates the heck out of me is when people request to be on our agenda and they don't get us material until the day of or the day before a meeting. So there's always been this informal policy that they're supposed to get it to us the Thursday before. I think we need to start enforcing that because-
You have the chair.
Yeah, because it, because it just, well, because what happens is, you know, what happens is that, you know, we get material the day of or the day before, we don't have time to review it. You know, we're clearly not ready for a thorough discussion, those discussions seem to take on a life of their own, we don't really get anywhere and we've wasted a half hour, forty-five minutes, so. No, so go ahead.
Yeah, I, I agree, the only thing I, I agree that there should be a deadline, it should be well-publicized and, but there should be no, we shouldn't get into this admonition mode, or, is that the right word?
I don't know what that means.
Admonish people, because I remember being in that situation with, with the, you know, solar thing or whatever, and then the board of selectmen would say, oh, well, we haven't seen this, and they would complain. And it was this sort of nasty thing in the meeting, it should be just, well, if you don't have the material in by this time, you're just not on the agenda.
Well, that's exactly what it would be, yeah, no, we wouldn't-
And no, like, you screwed up, or, or, or next time, do it better, or any of that kind of stuff, it's just clear cut, boom.
Exactly, that's exactly what I'm thinking.
And if we don't enforce the policy, then it's our fault and we shouldn't say anything about, oh, we haven't had, you know-
Right.
Do we post the agendas on Thursday?
If, if it's available, yeah.
Right, yeah, so usually the agendas are posted on Thursday.
Sometimes things change.
Forty-eight hours before, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have until Friday, technically, because we meet on Tuesdays, so sometimes something changes, something drops off the agenda, so we hold off until Friday.
And I could also see that there's a time where they'll have some stuff, but might have some things that they have to supplement or whatever.
Yeah, I mean, it's not a bright line, right, so, but I just didn't like the whole, you know, like, kind of nastiness of, of like, telling people they were late and-
Well, that's just it, no, it'll be a curve, right.
And, you know, you, you need to have this or otherwise, even if you do get on the agenda, we're just not gonna deal with that item because the materials weren't presented. And just say what the deadline was and we didn't receive the materials before that deadline. And then, and no, just, that's that, so I agree.
I guess I would say that if for anybody, any reason anybody did get on and we didn't have it and we talked about it, then we shouldn't vote on it that night. We shouldn't take action.
Should not vote on, yes, right.
Because we haven't had enough time to really review it.
Yeah, no, and that's just it, so it's, you know, I mean, and there are probably gonna be things that pop up that have to be resolved quick, you know, you know, but the, the goal is to try to prevent this, sort of, you know.
Yeah, it's hard to read something that's, you know, small font, two pages.
Right, while you're trying to have the discussion.
Right.
Yeah, and it just, it doesn't work for anybody and it's, it's a waste of everybody's time and it's not, not fair to anybody.
It's not the way we should be making decisions.
Right, exactly, so, okay, as long as you guys are fine with that, I'm gonna-
Yeah, I, I, I think, yeah, I think that's reasonable, I just, I just don't wanna make it like, you know, I don't wanna treat people like they were in school and they handed in their assignment, like, kind of thing. Because I've been in that situation, I found that to be very tiresome.
It is, yeah.
Like, okay, tell me what the rules are, you know, when's the deadline, and, yeah, okay, if I miss the deadline, I understand, I'm not on the agenda, I'm gonna have to come back in two weeks.
So, we're asking for materials to be put, submitted by Thursday, and then I think we should just regularly post on Friday, don't post, post the agenda on Thursday, post it on Friday. And then, if it's not in by Thursday, it doesn't go on the agenda, because if you post it on the agenda and then you don't get your things, now it's on the agenda, now you have to say something in a public meeting, I'd rather do it offline.
You may have people coming to, attending the meeting expecting something, and then, and then they're gonna be upset.
Before the agenda gets set, and you call the applicant and say, you know, we, we didn't get your materials, so you, we'll reschedule you for another time.
Right, if it's not in the packet.
Right, exactly.
Right.
Yeah, right, if it's not in the packet, then we shouldn't.
Easy enough, great, thank you.
Yeah, and then I guess there's a little bit of a judgment call on Tim's part, or on Jen's part, as to, you know, are these sufficient materials as opposed to, you know what I'm saying?
Right.
As opposed to like, a piece of paper that just has one word on it or something?
Right, exactly, right, I mean, if somebody wants to come and address their budget and they send us a, you know, three-line memo, you know, yeah, it's not gonna happen, but, but, yeah, I mean, I, I trust him and Jen enough.
Right, so there's an understanding on our part that there, that call essentially won't be made by you, the chair necessarily, it'll be made by, by Jen and Tim.
Yeah, exactly. You okay with that, Kerry?
Yeah.
All right.
So, moving right along, liaison reports. We can start on the blog side of things.
Uh-oh, I was at the Energy Task Force meeting last night and we discussed a number of things there. The task force is preparing to, to do a solar installation somewhere in town, we, we heard from them, and this has moved along, there was a discussion with the school committee. The school committee seems to be somewhat enamored of the idea of, of covering the parking lot. And there's also a very sloped area that's considered not buildable in any practical way for school expansion, and that sloped area might fit a solar field as well. So, those two areas are under consideration, and then there's the solar overlay district, which encompasses the area and includes perhaps the transfer station itself. And so the idea is to go out and get an RFP so that one can make a determination whether this is economically feasible, you know, ahead of, you know, trying to get public input because if it's not, there's no point in having a big public discussion about something, oh, never mind, it's just not possible, right, after going through that kind of thing. So, we heard a little bit about the HeatSmart program, which we heard about here, and let me think, what else? I think another thing we discussed was that, you know, well, a change of our mission. So our original mission was to save energy in municipal matters, and the Energy Task Force has moved on essentially, and we're encompassing now the whole town. And that happened when we became a green communities because there, for instance, the building code became the stretch code, and that impacted every residence that's been built since then. So, the Energy Task Force has, and the solar challenge obviously was, you know, a residential thing, and so we're thinking of presenting a new mission statement for approval that change, you know, that acknowledges that we're dealing not just with municipal matters, but we're going, you know, a little bit beyond that. And, and saving energy or, or looking at energy matters across the whole town. So, and then, you know, there was some talk about the goals, you know, of reducing energy consumption or of, of carbon-based fuels eighty percent and how difficult that is and how we wanna be honest about how, how difficult that's gonna be and how it's not clear how that's actually gonna happen, but that we feel confident about the steps that we're recommending as being, you know, a step in that direction without knowing exactly what the path is gonna be to the very end. So I think that covers what we talked about.
Is there gonna be a request for a warrant article from the Energy Task Force for anything to do with the solar project or not, not at this time, maybe?
Yeah, it probably won't be ready by-
Okay.
We're kind of understanding there's gonna be some type of a budget though for it?
The finance committee has discussed, yeah, creating a line item within the budget for the-
I think we've heard in one of our meetings with the finance committee. It was gonna be perhaps one of these special accounts where money, you know, and then it was like, well, that's too complicated, let's just give you a budget, you know, a few thousand that's commensurate to what that would end up being and we'll call it the day.
Yeah, grants coming up?
Oh, yeah, and so the Energy Task Force, since green communities, we became a green communities, there are these green communities grants that we've applied for, and we've done street lighting, we've done LED lighting in most of the municipal buildings and over half the school. The other half of the school is, so this past year, we didn't do any, we, it's difficult to complete your projects in time so that you can actually go year to year to year. They kind of set it up in such a way that you almost have to take a year off, so we, last year was a year off, we're looking to, and it's gonna be a tight schedule because they only tell you what you can apply for, like, in February and you have to get it in by March. But we're hoping to, to relamp the rest of the school so that it's all LED, and then it's a question of, well, what's the money gonna be available for and what do we have here that, that can match that? So, that's something that's coming up on the horizon.
So I think that the only meeting I've been to since our last selectman meeting was a facilities committee meeting. And we focused primarily on how we get ready for the budgeting process. And Bill and I took on trying to take the costs that we have so far and putting them into a format that is better for FinCom and Kerry to kind of incorporate into the budget overall, so meaning how much of this is just maintenance, how much of it is consulting fees, how much of it is long-term caps, how much, you know, so we just need to go back through and break it down, what we've asked for this year and where we think each thing could go. So, that's, I think that was the primary thing that we discussed was, you know, how to handle the financing. We did also talk about the facilities, the facilities manager and, you know, how, how that might best work as far as, you know, interactions with the school and, you know, a little bit more about how much time and, you know, what type of person we might be looking for and things like that, those were our two primary topics. Missing anything?
Well, hopefully you won't have to ask Bill.
Didn't, was, didn't Josh have a proposal from the school, in fact?
Yes.
So that was one-
We're very serious about this.
Well, Josh didn't have a proposal from the school, what, what he had was-
It was sort of a, yeah.
Yeah, what he, what he had was just kind of a write-up of a discussion that he had had, and, you know, we just took a look at that and chatted about what we, what we thought about that, but it still needed to go back to the school committee to make sure that what, what he had heard and written down on paper, you know, matched, and I think that they still have a little bit more work to do before it comes back to the facilities committee again.
That's to say, though, that it is moving forward, I mean, it's moving along.
Yes.
I actually haven't had too many meetings, it's been kind of nice for me. So Dog, we're supposed to meet on the fifteenth, but that's Martin Luther King Day, so we're gonna reschedule that. Like I said, the feedback was pretty positive from the, from the one meeting that we had, the one public meeting that we had, a few minor tweaks, we're getting some clarification on the insurance stuff, some council and some of the wording. But, yeah, hopefully the next meeting won't be too bad, and then, once it's finalized, you know, I can present more to the board. Bog committee, we're meeting on the twenty-second, so we've got some new things to kick around, just some other things to look at, you know, trying to figure out, there isn't gonna be a warrant request this year, I'm, I'm pretty sure for anything related to the bog, you know, part of it is what's right for Carlisle, but also to, you know, what'll be cost-effective and make sense long-term. You know, we, one of the things was, you know, having the hay, you know, that, that our current farmer could use, but, you know, some of the discussion has been, you know, is that sustainable, how much is it gonna cost? And is that really a long-term, a true long-term solution? So there are a few other alternatives to look at, so the committee has those and we're gonna discuss it on the twenty-second and come up with a more formal proposal, I think, to the cons come after that. CPC applications are due Friday, usually I hear some chatter, I haven't heard anything, so I'm hoping it's gonna be a quiet year. A few requests, you know, the, the housing authority, and we'll have to vote on this at our meeting, but housing authority to extend funds, trails committee to extend funds, there's another one, I've got it all in my email. Basically, everybody who has funds, oh, toll, cons come for toll to extend funds, but it doesn't look like there're gonna be any or many new requests this year, so, so that'll be good. That's it for, we had the, the chairs meeting, you know, pretty informal, those are always nice, but, yeah.
I just had long-term caps, we met with facilities, we're still waiting, mostly for facilities, we're gonna have another joint meeting, as I recall, in February, right?
During thirteen, thirteen through eighteen.
Something like that, so, yeah, because we're, we're basically needing to work through, you know, with them, what's gonna be warrant, what's gonna be long-term caps, and what's, what's gonna be today, what's gonna be tomorrow.
Yeah, yeah, great. Kerry, do you have any, where have you been?
No, I, I'm under the door.
So, I, I, so I went to the public works transfer station today because I'd heard a rumor in the meeting last night, Energy Task Force meeting, that we are no longer driving our recycling materials all the way to Southboro. They are being driven to Billrica now, to Waste Management.
That's not a rumor, that's, that's fact, wow.
Right, and I was able to verify this, well, unless somebody was telling me a story, but I don't suspect. So I, I spoke with one of the people who actually drives the trucks back and forth, and so I, I asked him, you know, how's it going, and he said, well, you know, it's pretty good, but the wait times, apparently, are longer at Waste Management, sometimes you wait in line for hours.
Really, with your truck running?
I didn't ask that question, in weather like this?
Yes, we'll do better because we won't get it started again.
Might wanna have anti-idling stuff on the trucks, but, anyway, yeah, I didn't ask that question, but sometimes it goes real quick. So it's, they were saying it's a hit and miss, he implied that they're still kind of learning the ropes over there, that maybe they're better times of day to go. He says that when the economy is going well, you know, you have these kinds of delays and, and it's real busy, so he says it is busy, you know, this time of year and so on and so forth. So, certainly the trucks have less miles on them, maybe more idling time, it's not clear, it'd be interesting to know in terms of hour, worker hours, you know, obviously, the drive to Southboro is probably an hour each way, or, yeah, especially if there's any kind of traffic.
Hour and fifteen, if there's any traffic.
Yeah, so, but if you're spending two hours in line on average, you know, in Billrica, then it's a wash as far as hours go. So anyway, that's a little update. The other thing is that we found out from the state that they're very eager to have, this is Green Communities, part of the state, to have our streetlights recorded as part of our energy. Green Communities, we were, we're supposed to reduce our energy use twenty percent. That was the goal, sort of when we signed up. And so, the streetlights were never in our original energy baseline in two thousand nine. And I guess that was an oversight. And we don't, we didn't want to put it in, the fact that we now have a less amount, because otherwise it'll go up, but the state said, no, 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 we're gonna retroactively change your baseline, yeah, and so on and so forth. So we should get a nice little boost there as well, so.
Yeah, and we've got the Recycling Committee, and Gary's part of that, correct? So he'll be at the next meeting, so we can bounce some of these questions off.
We'll be here with the Recycling Committee.
Yeah.
Good.
It'll be a good discussion. No, I think, you know, I've talked with a lot of different people, and a lot of folks are interested in change at the transfer station.
Yeah, on that topic, I mean, would it make, maybe we can have that discussion, you know, should we kind of take a step back and do an evaluation of the alternatives, you know, like all the way from, I think Kerry mentioned a curbside pickup, you know, and just subcontract the whole thing out to, you know, single stream, you know, various pay-as-you-throw, you know, and, and see, you know, try to come up with some numbers and say, well, if we do this, it'll cost, it'll affect, cost-wise, this, it'll affect our, you know, our ability to, our energy consumption and so on and so forth. The other thing is, apparently the state is going to set things up in such a way that tipping fees are gonna go up dramatically. Not like next year, but there's a plan so that, you know, it's not gonna be business as usual. You know, with regard to what we send to Andover, I guess.
What is it, wheel, wheel?
Wheelbrider.
Wheelbrider.
Yeah, that that kind of thing is gonna get very expensive.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's, it might be nice to sort of try to curtail that sooner rather than later.
And so your question was, should?
Well, should we, you know, have a committee or something, perhaps, you know, a Tim, you know, charter Tim or delegate to Tim and say, and Jen, you know, say, let's look at the alternatives, but, you know, let's come up with a proposal and say, okay, well, if Carlisle looked like Littleton and did pay-as-you-throw, you know, it, the budget and, and the tonnage and, you know, energy costs, tipping fees, and blah would look like this, the dump sticker would look like this, and, and your average household would pay this much in the plastic bags that, you know, you need. If we did curbside pickup, you know, it would cost this much. If we just said, people, look, we don't have, I don't know if we can not have a transfer station. Maybe we can't have that, but, you know, if we said, okay, people have to just subcontract their own, you know, curbside, or we ha, you know, we, we do it, and, you know, these options. Because I don't know if we've had a review like that, where we could say, well, yeah, because where we are now may not be optimal.
Right.
You know, we got here because, you know, it's traditional, not because we've evaluated it against the alternatives every year or even every five years.
This isn't what the Recycling Committee is coming to talk to us about.
Well, that's, yeah, no, that's the thing, I think that's what, that's what the goal of this was. And I don't think they'll have a thorough plan, but maybe.
No, but I think they have some information already about the pay-as-you-throw program and tipping fees and how much we're paying now.
Okay, okay, so maybe they're, they're on the ball then, they're doing that, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I was wondering, you know, I, I think it's important that we get that information, and.
They haven't done those other things, but I think, you know, they've done this for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then maybe.
What we could potentially do is, when they, if, you know, when they come in, if there's more we want to do, we could write up, kind of, hey, this is, that way, we, you know, they're not doing something that we're not, you know, they're just wasting their time. And we could say, hey, we'd really like to look, you know, thank you for your presentation. How about, you know, if we look at these things and then we could kind of formalize it, just to make sure that they're not wasting their time.
Right, exactly, yeah.
Yeah, that would be great.
Yeah, yeah, no, I think we're all on board with that. And, yeah, it's probably gonna take most of twenty eighteen to figure all this stuff out. We really have a proposal.
Oh, yeah, this is not, this is not gonna happen overnight, yeah.
Right, but, but it's something that I think we all agree needs to be done, and, you know, it's been.
I'm sure we won't have a hundred percent agreement in town, but.
What makes you think that?
I already received an anonymous letter.
Is it ticking?
I mean, for me, it depends on what the proposal is.
But, yeah.
I'm not gonna support whatever.
No, no, but the thing is, nothing, you know, it is no longer, as you said, business as usual. It hasn't been business as usual for the last ten years already, and we just can't say, well, this is the way we've always done it, because this is actually costing us some money, you know.
Yep.
And it's, yes, it'll be a transfer of possibly, you know, from taxes to fees. But it's, it's still money.
Right, exactly. Well, you know, and I, I think ultimately, hopefully, you know, the hope is that, you know, people recycle more, people, you know, think about compost more, you know, I mean, I know I certainly would. You know, and it's, it's that change of habit that's always hard to overcome.
I need a good pig farmer, because frankly, my composting efforts have been really not so successful the years.
Yeah, no, that's the thing.
But, that is what adds the weight to the trash. It's all, you know, I know when I, you know, have done melons and stuff, boy, that trash bag weighs a lot, and we pay by the ton. And if I could keep that out of the bag, I have no incentive to do it right now, and none at all.
Exactly, yep.
Well, yeah, the other thing that came up at the Energy Task Force meeting was that with the new tax code, the incentive to keep the fees inside, you know, the property, levy property taxes goes down, because, you know, there's a limit as to how much you can deduct. And so, many people in Carlisle may cross through that threshold, and then there's no added benefit to an increase in your, to putting more into the.
Yes, yes, oh, yeah, when I, believe me, when I used to be on school board, school committee, I used to tell people, you know, let's put in the taxes, you can deduct it, but if I do a fee, you're gonna have to just pay that, you know. But now that, as you said, that equation is kind of, that argument is out the window, unless they change it back.
Good, all right, so, yeah, hopefully.
Just changing the topic slightly.
Again?
What, I mean, this is just a curiosity thing, what percentage of our real estate taxes are under ten thousand dollars?
Well, the, the average is about fourteen, the average tax bill, so.
Yeah.
So that's the average?
And maybe forty percent or something.
But isn't the ten thousand encompassed state and property? It's not, it's not ten thousand just for.
No, I think it was just.
You're right, the deduction.
Oh, you mean income and property tax?
Right.
You're right. It was assault, state and.
Right, it could be property and state property tax and.
Yeah.
Locals, so.
And local taxes.
Oh, oh, I thought it was just the real estate taxes.
Yeah, no, no, it's, yeah. Zero percent.
It's all state and local.
Yeah.
So I would say there'd be very few households in Carlisle that pay less than ten thousand in state and local.
Yeah, I'm just curious as to what the impact of that lies on people in Carlisle.
Yeah.
I mean, I would think it would be a very high number.
Yeah, I think there's also a high number of people who itemize in this town, more than in other towns surrounding as well, which is why we had a lineup here.
Yeah, right.
Because people that didn't itemize don't care.
Okay, moving on, so, yeah, your approval of the warrants.
Oh, my approval, yeah, what do I need to say?
Was there anything major that stood out? I think most of us probably don't.
Did I look? I signed them.
Yeah, okay.
I think the board is just going to accept.
What do you, yeah, what do I need?
The word of, you know, select and read that she approved the warrant on December twenty-sixth, as you had voted to authorize her to do so.
The board accept the report of, agreed for, of the signing of the warrant of December twenty-sixth on behalf of the entire board.
Is there a second?
I, so moved, no, second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Oscar Lilloye? Oh, sorry, did you have something?
Nope.
Oh.
Mr. Yar.
Reed I.
Brown I.
Von Roskin I. Oh, you already did the I.
It goes Chair, Vice Chair, Chair, Vice Chair, Clerk, and then alphabetical.
And just so you know, there's probably gonna be another warrant next week, which I've already agreed to sign next week. A special.
Are folks gonna be around?
I am, I, well.
Yeah.
Yeah, so far I'm around.
Okay.
For next week, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, if folks are around then, I think we should just.
We don't have a meeting next week, do we?
No, but we can stop them.
Send an email and if people say they're not around.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I don't think.
Well, she just asked, you know, was I gonna be around? Priscilla asked, was I gonna be around, because she had a special one.
Oh, gotcha, yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, no, I mean, it's probably fine, yeah, but, yeah, folks are around. Minutes.
So I have a question.
Really trying to kill my agenda time today. We got eleven minutes, what's your question?
Well, I missed the first hour.
Yeah, well, next time.
Could you go through it again?
No.
On the joint discussion with the Carlisle Housing Authority, are, are these items in bold listed as they were on the agenda? Because it's, if, if so, then I'm fine with it, because it, it should match it. But, but we didn't meet with the Carlisle Housing Authority, we met with Carlisle Housing Authority Representatives.
I'm sorry, which?
I'm sorry, on, yes, on December twelfth.
December twelfth we're doing, okay, because mine, I have December nineteenth in front of December twelfth in my books.
Yeah, and so I just, you know, just to clarify, it was. It wasn't the entire Housing Authority, it's missed, yeah.
Okay, you're right.
But if this matches what's on the agenda, it should probably match what's on the agenda.
Oh, that's.
You can confirm that, right?
That was it.
This is the change, okay.
Does anybody have anything else for this one?
I sent in a couple of edits, and they've been taken care of in here.
Kerry, did you have anything?
No, I, I saw a couple of typos, like Mark Levitan's sentence was the last word, project was dropped or something, but.
That was my edit.
Listen, like, you know, nothing substantial, like, that I can do.
All right, great. Thanks, Kerry. Somebody wanna make a motion?
I move to accept the minutes of December twelfth, two thousand seventeen, as amended or as corrected by Kate Kerry.
Is there a second?
And Nathan.
And Nathan, I'm sorry.
And Nathan, as amended, yeah.
As amended, yeah.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Oscar Lilloye?
Mr. Yar.
Reed I, sorry if I got.
Brown I.
Von Roskin I.
All right, now the minutes of December nineteenth.
I sent in some edits.
Thank you. Kerry, did you have anything, or did you send yours in?
No, there was, there was a word, two mispronounced, but that's, that's.
I had, I had one thing that I think I'll ignore it for now and just make sure that it happens later.
Okay.
Because I, during the meeting, I had made a comment that the proposed regulation should be edited to say that it's the Carlisle, it's the Carlisle Board Selectment allows board funding to match the previous thing, but I don't think it needs to be in these minutes. We just need to make sure it's changed in the actual.
Right, yeah, yeah, that's a good thing, yeah. Okay, somebody wanna make a motion?
I move to accept the minutes of December nineteenth, two thousand seventeen.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
As amended.
As amended.
Because I sent in some of them.
Right, is it, but is it, have any been made or no?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, that was good, that was good, yeah. Oscar Lilloye?
Mr. Yar.
Reed I.
Brown I.
Von Roskin I.
All right.
I move that we adjourn this meeting before the scheduled adjournment time.
Nine minutes.
I don't second that.
No?
Oh, no.
All right.
Second.
Nathan's gonna force us to.
Okay, Oscar Lilloye.
Mr. Yar.
Reed I.
Brown I.
Von Roskin I.
Great.